Happy New Year, everybody. Mike?
New Year.
Matt? Everybody else? Oh, there's... What else have I seen?
Happy New Year.
Maya? I haven't seen you. The rest of you, I see way too much.
Peter, are you bundled up or... Not a neck brace, is it, Peter?
No, 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 just a jacket. I'm actually outside. I gotta get in my car and so I'm gonna have to switch my phone to my car in a little bit. I had the times wrong. I thought we were at 7:30 on normal time and then... So I had to... I gotta pick up my son, but I'll be available. Can you hear me, Matt?
Sure.
Okay.
Now you look very official with the school coat on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Matt, you're all dressed up. Look good.
I don't dress up too much, so I figured, you know, reorg.
Thank you.
His evaluation's tomorrow, that's why he's dressed up.
He's smart.
Waiting on two.
So is there a way to see lists, you know, who's attending as a guest and not on our link?
Yeah. Put on participants.
Yeah, if you click it on.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Gotcha. And if I believe it's true, attendees cannot see attendees. Is that right? But our participants are able to see them.
Correct.
Okay. Hi, Bob.
Happy New Year, Bob.
Happy New Year to you. You, too.
It really is true, the board, we've seen a lot of each other this week.
We see each other every couple hours.
We haven't seen our other colleagues here. It's great to see everyone. What is going on here?
We're good.
Hello, everybody.
Where's Susan? Hi, Michelle.
Nine, just nine so far.
Yeah, we're missing Susan.
Susan.
There's another big election going on tonight in Georgia.
Right.
Susan's in the waiting room.
Oh, okay. So my dad is here, so feel free to start whenever. I'm just... Aww. Is he really... Is he on the list, Jean? Oh, hi, Jean's dad. That's exciting. Where does he live, Jean? Outside of Pittsburgh, Somerset County, Pennsylvania. Yeah. Sorry about that. Computer issue.
No problem. All right. I guess we should... Ready to go back?
Yep, we're ready.
All right, so a little differently. At the reorganization meeting, I will start out the meeting. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items, on the published agenda, or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending. As required under the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 1046 at sequitur, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk, Princeton Pack, at end of times on January 9, 2020, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. Public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate time, as noted on the agenda or added by the presiding officer, shall raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Once called upon, the member of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools, as more specifically designated in NJSA 188388.1. In the event that this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions. So tonight, we recognize the certified election results from Mercer County, and we have two returning and one new board member. Michelle Tuck-Ponder, Beth Baron, and incoming board member Jean Durbin. Congratulations to all three of you. We also have tonight one of our attorneys, Brett Gorman from Parker McKay. So I figured he would swear you in, as it being more official to having a lawyer do the swearing in. Hey, Brett.
Hi, everyone. Okay, do we want to do these one at a time, or do we want to do it all at once? Is there a preference?
One at a time.
One at a time. Okay. First one I open up is Michelle Tuck-Ponder. Let me know when you're ready.
I am ready.
Michelle? There you are. Okay. All right. I'm sure you remember from last time, but there's actually two oaths of office you're gonna be taking. So if you would mind raising your right hand and repeat after me. I, Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
I, Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God what you do or do not need to say.
So help me God.
Okay. All right, and now we'll move on to the second oath. Please keep your right hand up. I, Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
I, Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office.
For the office.
Of member.
Of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all duties.
Perform all duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And again, if you'd like to say, "So help me God."
So help me God.
All right. Congratulations, you were sworn in.
Thank you.
All right, the next one I have is Jean Durbin. Loading yours right now.
All of my family is here, but not on camera.
Oh, excellent. Oh, good. Very good. All right, it's gonna be the same. Just give me one second. It's loading and it's just taking a second. Okay. All right, so when you're ready. Are you ready?
Ready.
Okay. Repeat after me. I, Jean Durbin.
I, Jean Durbin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And again, should you like to say this, "So help me God."
So help me God.
Okay. All right, now let's move on to the second one. All right, again, I, Jean Durbin.
I, Jean Durbin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office.
For the office.
Of member of a Board of Education.
Of member of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And again, "So help me God."
So help me God.
All right. Congratulations, you're sworn in. I see a lot of claps from the muted people. Okay, and finally, Beth Baron.
Okay.
We did not do this alphabetically, so I'm sorry. Beth, oh, okay, you ready?
Ready.
Okay, there you are. Okay, now you popped up. All right, so once again. I, Beth Baron.
I, Beth Baron.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And for the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And should you choose to say it, "So help me God."
So help me God.
All right, now we're on to the second oath. I, Beth Baron.
I, Beth Baron.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member.
For the office of member.
Of a Board of Education.
Of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, you were sworn in. Claps again. All right, and I also want to compliment the three of you. This is the first time I've ever sworn in board members where all... Or any of you knew not to say both swear or affirm. They usually say both instead of swear or affirm, so.
Great, thank you. So now we're gonna take the official roll call. Beth Baron.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Dan Dart.
Here.
Betsy Bagwell.
Here. Here.
Oh.
Here.
I called you twice. Brian McDonald.
Present.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Present.
Peter Katz.
Here.
Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
Jean Durbin.
Present.
We have a quorum and a full board, as usual. So next is, we officially acknowledge that we follow rules of parliamentary procedures for conducting public meetings. We accept those rules. A little backwards, but we've appointed the Board Secretary and myself as the official or temporary chair until we have a fully voted-in author of president. And that brings us to that next point right now. Do we have any nominations for board president? Daphna. Ms. Kendall.
Thank you, Matt. So first, I'd like to say, welcome, Jean, to the board and everyone to 2021. It's a new year filled with hope. There's a vaccine on the horizon, and at some point, schools will be reopening. There are many challenges ahead of us, but it's an exciting time to serve on the Board of Education. We must stay focused on moving forward in the best interest of students, and so I nominate Beth Baron as board president.
Excellent. Do we have a second? Brian McDonald. So... So, resolve that the Board of Education by roll call, appoint Beth Baron to the office of President of the Princeton Board of Education effective January 5, 2021 until the next organizational meeting, and that was motioned by Ms. Daphne Kendall and seconded by Mr. Brian McDonald. Can we take a vote? Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Abstain.
Dan Dart.
Abstain.
Betsy Bagwell.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Yes.
Peter Katz.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Ms. Baron.
Thank you.
Board President, and I'll pass the virtual gavel over to you.
I got it. Okay. I guess the next item is then... Should I say something first, or should we do the voting? If we do the voting first, right? I'd like to open the nominations for the Vice President of the Board. Could I have a nomination? Michelle?
Yes, thank you. It is my honor and pleasure to nominate Kendall as Vice Chair or Vice President of Princeton Board of Education. Daphna and I started out in a very bumpy way with our relationship, and over the past two years, I have grown to have tremendous respect for her as a board member and as a fierce advocate for kids in special ed. She has an unflagging commitment to equity. She's honest. She works incredibly hard, and she is a stellar, stellar colleague. I had the pleasure of working with her on the Labor Negotiations Committee. I've watched her work on facilities, and there's not anything that she's not willing to take on, and I'm so honored to be able to nominate her. She is a valued colleague who listens. She's a valued colleague who cares deeply about the children in this district, and is a valued colleague who's not afraid to put herself out there and act. So it is with my great pleasure to nominate Daphne Kendall for Vice President of the Princeton Board of Education.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there a second?
A second.
Debbie? All right. Matt, we have a motion that has been made and seconded. Would you like to read the motion?
Resolve that the Board of Education by roll call, appoint, roll call, vote, appoint Daphne Kendall to the Office of Vice President of the Princeton Board of Education effective January 5, 2021 until the next organization meeting.
Mr. Bolden, can we call a roll on that?
I will. Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Sorry, yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, Daphna. Unanimous.
Congratulations, Beth. And if I... Do you want to speak first, or...
Let me just... I just want to say one quick thing, and then I'd like to hear you as well. So I just wanted to thank Daphna for the nomination, and I want to thank all of my colleagues for your confidence and for the honor of leading this board for another year. As we all know, everything we do as a board, we do collaboratively as a team, and all on behalf of our students, who are at the center of every decision that we make. And like our country, our community, our educators, our students, our board has had a very challenging year, and we are so much stronger for it. And just in the past few weeks, over the holidays, we've met over 20 hours for superintendent interviews. We spent six hours in professional development, and we've had numerous individual conversations about how we can most effectively serve our students moving forward. I am optimistic about 2021 and look forward to working with all of you to tackle the challenges ahead, modeling our views of partnership, innovation, and care, listening and carefully considering all of our varied perspectives, and keeping front and center our mission of preparing students for lives of joy, purpose, and purpose as knowledgeable, creative, and compassionate citizens of a global society. As Nelson Mandela said, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." So I look forward to working with all of you on powerful change in the next year. So thank you. Daphna?
Well, I don't have anything, you know, to say, other than I wanted, you know, to thank Michelle for that kind nomination. And again, like I've said this before, one of the most rewarding parts of board service is getting to meet people you wouldn't ordinarily get to meet. Michelle, you're one of those people, and, you know, it means a lot that you nominated me, and to the board, thank you for your confidence in me. I look over, you know, closely with Beth to address some of, you know, the challenges and work in the best interests of our kids and our staff, and I think this will be a great year. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Daphna. Everybody. Great, guys. Thank you so much. Let's... So next, we're gonna talk about our standing committee structure. I think there's consensus on the board at this point that we would like to keep our committees for the short term just the same as they are, with the exception of bringing Jean Durbin on to take Jess Deutsch's seat on equity and policy. And Betsy, who has been on four committees, has kindly offered to have Jean sit in on finance for her. Thank you, Betsy, for that. But we would then reorganize our committees once we've had our next session with the Bucks County IU, when we talk about our committee structure and what we want it to look like, and then we can tackle whether we would like to make changes to the committees that we have. That's only the consensus of the board, and so that's the public information item on committee structure. And the next item is just information. We obviously welcome Peter Katz again as our representative from the Cranberry Send/Receive. Welcome, Peter, to another year on the Princeton Board of Education.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
And quite the maneuver from your... Sorry. Just quite the maneuver from wherever you were, to seamlessly in your basement.
That's right. You're back in your ordinary spot.
We're getting to each other's homes too much.
Yeah. You all see my Christmas wrapping. And then we come to the Code of Best, which we are required to adopt and have a little bit of training on every year, and for that, we have our counsel, Brett Gorman, here from Parker McKay.
Okay, hi, everyone. So I had a presentation, but I think it might just be easier... Does everybody have the attachment, which just lists the Code of Ethics for school board members?
Yes.
Okay, I think that was an attachment to the... To your agenda. It might be easier to go through this, unless you'd rather me do the PowerPoint, Beth. What would you...
We could probably just read through. Are you thinking that we might take turns reading the different lines? I think we've done...
Yeah, that'd be great. And it's some of these, so I might stop you as we go through, and then I can kind of point to where these connect, because you'll see that some of these really refer to another one, other different ones within the code. So yeah, if we want to start, does someone want to read A, and we'll go through, and I'll jump in with, you know, some things further.
Since we're not at a table and we can't go in a circle, should we just raise hand to read the next one? How do you want to do that?
Do it alphabetically.
Yeah. Are we able to figure that out?
Call you in order as I see you on the screen.
Yeah, do that.
Yeah, why don't you... Matt, you call.
Okay, is everyone has the ethics? So Jean is first in line, the board order?
So...
So I'm gonna read the preamble and letter A.
I can just read letter... Oh, yeah, yes, that works.
Great.
The members of the Princeton Board of Education recognize that they hold authority, not as individuals, but as members of the Board. In order to make a clear public statement of its philosophy of service to the students of the district, the Board adopts this Code of Ethics. I will uphold and enforce all laws, state board rules and regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes should be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
And really, nothing too much to note here. I mean, this is pretty, you know, catch-all. You're gonna enforce all laws, and you're gonna follow legal and ethical procedures. So nothing really to delve into here beyond what it says, I think.
Okay. Beth, can you go next, please?
Yeah. I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools, which meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
Yeah, and I know there's several attorneys here. I mean, this is gonna delve into the discrimination portion. It's maybe saying, we're gonna, you know, you're gonna operate the school districts, you know, with no discrimination.
Great. Betsy, you are up next. Betsy Bagwell.
Thank you. I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the Board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
So, Betsy, if you could read that one, and...
Sure.
Trying to find it here. An F together.
Okay, I don't actually... I don't have the letters on mine, so F starts...
I will carry out my responsibility.
I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run.
Sure. So C and F really are kind of meant to read together, and if you see them, they kind of... They play together. So C defines your role as policymaking. You determine the overall policy for the district. And then when you go to F, you'll see that's where there's the demarcation with the administration, which is you don't administer the schools. That's what you have a superintendent, a business administrator for. They carry out the day-to-day, day-to-day of the school. And that's, this is kind of the, one of the more meatier areas, not that there's a lot of, lot to delve into here. But this is where we see a little bit more, I would say misunderstanding of the role of the board, but, but sometimes overstepping in terms of that, not, not necessarily this board, but in general, this comes out. So if you read these two together, you'll see C limits your role and then F specifically notes the remainder of what's left to be completed is done by the administration. We can get into specifics if anybody has any questions on that or we can move on.
I have a question. Can you give an example of board members, an example that you're aware of, of board members administering the schools?
Sure. So let's say, so I mean, obviously the biggest, the biggest example that comes to mind is in terms of hiring. Right? So your hire is the superintendent. So that's the one hire you're allowed to make. But let's say, for example, there's a teacher that's, that, you know, so-and-so wants, wants to, wants hired. That's the superintendent's call. That's the only way you're actually allowed to hire them. And you'll see that, that actually comes up in another one of these down and a little bit later is on the recommendation of the superintendent. So you can't just go into the superintendent and say, "This lady is a great teacher. My, you know, my, my, my son had them in another district. She's amazing. You need to hire her." Okay, that's where it starts crossing the line is the superintendent's role and, and, and going into the administration of the school. Or another example is you got a complaint from a parent on something and you take it and you go to do your own investigation and, 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 you know, try to take action on your own. Whereas you'll see there's another one that we're coming up on that specifically tells you to refer all complaints to the administration superintendent for review.
Brett, I have a question. I would, I would appreciate some clarity around, I don't know what letter it is, but it says, "I will confine my board action." Because what that, what that implies to me is action taken as a formal board as, as opposed to activities that you take in your capacity as a board member. So can you distinct, make a distinction between?
Do you have a letter? I'm sorry, do you have a letter?
It says, "I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning and appraisal."
Why do I not see? Oh, here it is. Okay, yeah, yeah. Oh, okay. All right. So this is, this is referring to, this, this is why I had you read the letter F with this. So in terms of your board action, this is where it's saying your role is making the policy. So the policy of the Board of Education is X, Y, Z. And that's the principle that you want the administration to implement is the way to kind of do it. So that's what that's referring to. And that's why I went to F where it talks about administration of the schools. Because that's where, that's the line you're not supposed to, you know, under the code here across. And the examples I gave earlier would be there. Does that answer your question or is there something?
Not really, because when you talk about action, are we talking about individual actions or collective actions? Maybe that's the clarity I'm seeking.
All right. Well, do you want to give me an example? Like, what are you thinking in terms of individual action?
So, so if I, if I wrote a letter to the newspaper and said, "I'm speaking as an individual member of the Board of Education, not for the full board," is that an action?
Well, so, I mean, I hate to give you the lurid answer, but it depends, but it would, it would depend, right? So it would depend on what's the information based on, right? Is the information going to be based on, you know, some specific discussion or some specific issue that was going on? Or is it just as a member of the public? So you got to remember, you as a board member, do not lose, do not lose your rights as a member of the public. So, you know, if you have a concern about something, you know, you're allowed to raise it, just like anybody else would be allowed to raise it. You know, where it potentially crossed the line is, you know, you have specific information. You know, it's information to place an executive session or something along those lines where it could cross the line. So it would really depend on the circumstance as to whether or not you are crossing the line when, when that were to take, if that were to take place.
Okay.
So if you're thinking of writing something and you're not sure about it, you want to get an opinion on it, definitely you can feel free to run it by, you know, one of us just to be clear. But, you know, you know, I mean, general, general statements, you know, that, that, you know, I don't know. You want more funding for the school, right? That's, you know, and you were to make that statement publicly. I don't think that necessarily would be something, something that would be there. Okay. Is there anything else? Do you want me to, anything else you want me to go?
No, it's not written well enough to have a clear answer, but I appreciate your attempt. Thank you.
I, I don't, I, I mean, I just, that's where we'd have to get into school ethics commission decisions and go from there. And it becomes like really fact-based. Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, I mean, on the fly, I probably won't be able to give you a really great answer. I'm sorry.
But thank you. I appreciate the attempt.
Sure. All right. Do we want to move on to D?
So Debbie, the fourth one down or it's letter D or the fourth one down on the agenda?
I will behave toward my fellow board members with the respect to their office, demonstrating courtesy, decorum and fair play on public meetings and in all public statements.
Yeah. And I think that one speaks for itself. Hopefully everybody treats each other well. All right. And then E?
Dan, you want to read the fifth one down or letter E?
Yes, I'd be happy to. I will refrain from inappropriate conduct in meetings and making public statements, refraining from any disparagement of my fellow board members or others on personal, social, racial or religious basis.
I think that kind of, that ties in with D is right there and what you're talking about in terms of just general conduct of board members. Okay. Next one for F, unless there's any questions?
So F, we just read along.
Oh, that's right. Yep, 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 G.
We'll go with the seventh one down or G. Daphna, if you could read that for us?
Okay, um, I will recognize, oh, no, 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 it's, I will carry out. Is that the one?
That's it. No, you had it right. I will recognize.
Oh, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action which may compromise the board.
Okay, I think, I mean, you know, that also, that also mostly speaks for itself. You know, the board acts as a whole, not with any individual. And obviously this is going to make reference to some conflicts of interest, which is the, which we don't, we're not going to get into now, but you know, it delves into, you know, family members, relatives, immediate family members and situations like that as well. But that's a whole separate issue that we could spend several hours discussing if we wanted to.
Brett, can I ask a question? You brought up family members. And I know years ago, we talked about if a family member of a board member, so I'm actually thinking whether it's our children signing a petition through the school or whether it's a spouse at a cocktail party or whatever. Is there some kind of preamble that, that, I know when we say, "I'm speaking on behalf of myself and not on behalf of the board," is there something similar that a family member should be saying or is that sort of too much?
No, I mean, I mean, I think, I think the answer that they can't be overt, they can't be overt in the other direction, which is, you know, my wife's a board member, so I'm entitled to X, Y and Z, right? That, that's kind of more, but I don't think they necessarily need to qualify, you know, their things. I mean, just because, you know, I mean, you guys sacrificed enough to be board members. I don't think your husband or your, your family and kids need to make apologies upfront to teachers or anything. And obviously you don't, you don't, you know, lose your rights as a parent in the, in the school or anything else like that. So yeah, I mean, barring anything overt, I think you're okay without having to give some kind of qualification or, you know, your family having to do that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
But again, anything specific comes up, feel free to, we'll, we'll let you know, specific, if anything specific. Okay, the next one, which starts with, "I will refuse."
So next up is Michelle. You can read, it's the eighth one down or H, "I will refuse to surrender."
Gotcha. "I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends."
Yeah. And that, and that one also kind of falls into the, the previous one and talks about utilizing the, the board for your own personal gain or, you know, gain of friends in this case. But, you know, obviously the, anything specific is, is actually defined and a lot of this is really, is well litigated and well settled. So in terms of who, you know, who you can and cannot, who you can and cannot, you know, take votes on for in terms of hiring or anything else like that. So if there's any potential conflicts, just raise them. We'll, we'll analyze them for you. Any questions or can we move on? I? Okay. I, it starts with, "I will hold."
So Brian, you are next up.
"I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, would be the injured schools." But in all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools.
Okay. And obviously the first part there is a big one in terms of, you know, keeping, you are given a lot of confidential information. And obviously holding that is important. And also just the, I'll give you a weird, weird example that's something that I, that I witnessed was, you know, in executive session, even just recording of conversations can be deemed a school ethics violation. If it's without, you know, knowledge of anybody else and if there's even the idea that there's some kind of personal use to it. So, you know, obviously make sure you're very, 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 take, take that portion very seriously. Because there are significant laws in terms of how we have to keep student records and other things confidential. Okay. All right, Jay, this one sounds like a, a germane one to you guys right now. Starts, "I will vote."
Susan, you are up next.
"I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the superintendent."
Okay. I was more referencing the hiring of superintendent, but yeah, this, this goes into what we talked about before where I mentioned, you know, the recommendation of the superintendent is how you make hiring decisions. And this kind of lays that out. And that was the trade-off when they changed the law to get rid of superintendent tenure was they got the right to choose the personnel and your role is to vote, you know, up or down vote, accept or not. And that's kind of the, that's the only really rare circumstances that become an issue. All right. Okay. "I will support and protect."
Peter, the second one up from the bottom or K?
"I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties."
That's, yeah, fairly self-explanatory. And the last one, somebody wanted, do we have anybody left? Matt?
Uh, no, we went through the, we can go right back to the top with Jean Durbin, if you want.
First meeting, wow.
Letter L, "I will refer all complaints to the superintendent and will act on such complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution."
Okay. And again, this is, you know, hitting home the, 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 the break between your role as policymakers and the, and the administration's role in administrating the school. And, you know, again, it's in three or four of these ones as we went through it. So, okay, all right. I think we completed that. There any questions on this as a whole?
I, I have a quick question, Brett. I noticed this is 12 and the previous was 10. When did that change?
Yeah. So I was actually, no, I actually noticed that myself. I, let me pull it up the, pull up the actual.
One, I believe one of them is one that the district has used as a supplement for quite some time that is not found in the state's Code of Ethics.
Yeah, it looks like the state's goes up to J. And the last two are, I guess, are two from the district themselves that you, at some point were added into your policy.
Oh, I think the last one is awful. Like, we would never do that.
Uh, so, yeah, I mean, listen, you guys can take, can, can vote on that one. So yeah, the, the law, I'm looking at it right now. It goes up to J, which is, "I will vote to appoint the best qualified." Uh, no, no, Jay says, "I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of administrative solution."
So that's a state?
That's from the statute, yeah.
Okay.
So there are, you do have two extra ones in here. I mean, they look duplicative. Do you want me to figure out what the two extra ones are?
Oh, I, I could.
I think letter D is not part of the code. I think that's the one we might have added.
Yeah, I think E as well. D and E.
Right.
I agree, Dan. I think those are the two added sections.
I think you're right. I don't see, "I will behave."
Yeah. And I'm looking at another version and those are two that were added in between the typical C and D.
Yeah, it looks like that's correct. Yeah, based on what I'm looking at here.
So were those added in a, in a policy? I'm just curious. Or?
Must be, right?
Okay.
Well, do you know the answer, Matt? Do we have the policy up there?
We did work, off the top of my head, that was a very good question, Dan. But I think, I think we added those in during the last year. I don't believe it was the previous year.
No, I don't think we've added those in our, my, my time.
And Matt, we can't, we can't make new state law, by the way, as, as much.
I am, I am well aware. I promise, but I did not add them in. I will research that though. So before I can just make random guesses, have, has we, when we added those in there?
So we, it seemed to me, we should be affirming the state statute and policy if those are in a policy. So.
I'm looking at here, see if you have a policy specifically on this. It's being the 1,000.
We do. And I'll see, is the longer version.
Okay. So, all right. So that's what's happened here. Do you know what number that is?
I couldn't find it.
Probably under bylaws of the board.
Yeah, it's probably one of the first.
Let's see, role of the board, 9,000 perhaps?
9271.
Yep, there it is, Code of Ethics. Yeah. So this, this appears in your policy. So, and it looks like the policy, you know, we don't know when we changed it on here. Oh, yeah, revised, yeah, 2018. So February 27, 2018 is when this would have been, I'm guessing that would have been the revision because the other, the law hasn't changed. Never right here. Yeah, this law was passed and like is 2001 is when this law was passed. So this is probably when it was adopted on, yeah, 2010. And then that, that's the change that would have been made in 2018. So your options, I mean, your board, you can, you can vote to make a change to the policy. But, but Mr. Dart is correct that you're only obligated to affirm those 10 and it's your choice if you want to do the remaining two or not.
Well, we, we all signed individual affirmations, correct?
You would have, yeah, that's part of this.
That's how we did it. Either we affirmed all of them or if somebody crossed out the ones that are just policy, I guess that's legally acceptable.
I think I, I will have to, well, I don't want to speak out of turn here at all, but probably to Dan's point, be footnoted, which are part of the statute and the two that are part of official adopted board bylaw.
Okay.
We can make that real. I can make that very easily.
But for purposes, for purposes of our today's, you know, affirmation, I think we satisfied that, Brett?
Yes, you definitely satisfied that. And then, I mean, if this is something the policy committee wants to take a look at moving forward, that's fine.
Okay.
But yeah, for anybody who's signing anything, I think to your right point, Beth, if anybody has an objection to D and E, they, I mean, they, they can cross that out and still comply with the law.
Well, and I just wonder if this, when we moved to the NJ SBA model, perhaps there was different language. You know, I'm not sure if it was Princeton-specific language or if there was other language in a policy that was a model policy. So more information would be, would be helpful.
Yeah. Okay. Is that, have we, are we finished with our Code of Ethics? So we have any other questions for Mr. Gorman? If not, I would ask a general question about the agenda, Matt and Barry. I noticed that we have public comment in the middle of kind of, and I'm not sure where the consent vote is. I wonder whether, and Barry, your items are kind of down towards the bottom. I'm wondering whether, Barry, you want to do your items now?
Okay.
And then I don't see where the consent vote is.
They're all consent, so we're going to take one vote and they're all going to be on that vote unless someone separates out that item.
But so I just think we should have Barry speak and then we should go through the items and then maybe have a public comment before we vote. Does that make sense?
That works for me. And, and if we have questions along the way, we can ask them? Sure.
It's just a little bit of a different agenda than we normally have. So. So can we move G up now and go next with G? Does that make sense? The superintendent's message?
Sure. Okay, we, we okay to go?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Being selected by your peers for leadership for this year. Look forward to working with you all. This will be my last board that I work with as I exit in June and my last assignment as a superintendent. So I'm pleased to work with a, a group of people like, like yourselves. Wonderful people. And I look forward to working with the committee chairs when they're chosen. And I look forward to a successful 21, hopefully a vaccination. And before I leave, hopefully to see kids in school. So that will be hopefully the goal of our politicians and all of our government officials so that we get a vaccine as quickly as possible and hopefully utilize the schools as a conduit so that we can vaccinate as many people as possible to get our kids back in school. But congratulations to you all and I look forward to spending the next six months with you. Just a couple of items, winter sports. As you all know, Dr. Helmrich has been wonderful and, and Princeton Health Department along with Dr. Di Fernando, guiding us through a successful school opening this, this year. We also had a successful fall sports season. Dr. Helmrich, based on the American Pediatrics Association recommendations, has indicated that our winter sports program, he would recommend that we have a universal mask policy. There are some school districts that are not adopting that and therefore causing us some concern about how much competition we can have with our winter sports program. Our athletic director is seeking schools that will comply with a universal mask wearing so that our youngsters can participate in as many competitions as possible. What I would like to do is have the authorization to move our program, to move schedules, to do whatever I can to ensure that we operate within the medical protocol set by our medical team and also afford the opportunity for youngsters to participate in a winter sports activity that meets those. that, uh, meets those standards. I'll stop and ask, answer any questions that I, that may be there.
Um, Barry, I had one. Um, is this just for PHS? Because we did talk about in the fall, trying to find something for the middle school kids.
This currently, Debbie, is for PHS. Uh, we will try to do something with middle school. In fact, Brian is meeting with middle school personnel over the next week to see whether or not we could do something for our middle school. But this is varsity athletics only.
Okay.
Uh, and right now, as I say, uh, some of the, some of our traditional competition are not adopting the universal mask protocol. So therefore, that kind of puts us in a little bit of a bind. And if they don't adopt it, uh, we then will have to find competition that will, uh, participate, uh, under our protocols.
Right. No, I, believe me, I'm all for that. Um, and I understand winter's really hard. Can we really try and focus and have maybe just running groups, you know, for the middle school when we get to the spring?
Brian will do.
I feel like we haven't had a lot of extra.
Uh, and I don't disagree with you. And Brian will do everything, because we talked about, uh, this the other day when he was in my office, and he said, I'm meeting with the middle school people because we'd like to see whether or not we can develop some sort of an integral program for them. So I know Brian will do everything possible, uh, to provide some activity for the youngsters there.
Great, thank you.
Brian, you had a question? You're on mute.
Barry, um, we had a chance to speak earlier today, um, and I raised a couple of questions, and I think the board and the public would be interested to hear a few things you shared. You, you shared with me that Dr. Helmrich's, um, recommendation is based on, um, advice that is also being provided by others. And that, um, this was definitely not a case of, uh, canceling winter sports, but working as hard as we can to make sure that, for our students, they can be conducted in a, a safer manner as possible. And you also noted that there were just some disconnects within the county and the league that were, um, ones that you and Brian were wrestling with.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's difficult, because everyone has a, you know, a, a different standard and, and has a different philosophy with regard to sports. Dr. Helmrich is a sports advocate. In fact, when I first met him in July, he advocated for fall sports. He advocates for winter sports. He advocated for our outdoor conditioning program. But he is also someone who treats a lot of patients in our community. And in his opinion, and in the opinion of the American Pediatrics Association, he believes that the, the best way to keep our athletes safe and for them not to cause a problem on the academic side where we would have transmissions would be for the universal mask wearing. Not all the school districts or medical professionals, uh, agree with that. I, uh, I believe I should follow the medical advice that he provides, along with, uh, the affirmation by the Princeton Health Department and Dr. Di Fernando, because this medical team since August has, um, pretty much given us terrific guidance with regard to keeping our schools open and allowing our fall athletics program to occur pretty much without a hitch, maybe just a couple of isolations. So, uh, there are some disconnects, but, uh, we believe that eventually people will wear masks and we will be able to have some competitions, or we will be able to find school districts who want to compete and compete with the universal mask. Uh, you just saw today where Boston College and Holy Cross are playing a Division One basketball game, all wearing masks. The MAC Conference, where my granddaughter plays basketball in college, they're wearing masks. So, uh, we don't think it's, uh, we don't think it's a, 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 a big ask. We just think it's a, uh, it's something that our medical people believe is important to keep kids safe, keep our faculty in, safe, and, uh, and keep our academics alive for in-person instruction. So basically, uh, I'm recommending that we follow that guidance.
Daphna? You're on mute.
Barry, I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you, you know, I'm glad that we're a district that's following the science. You know, I think we've all seen those pictures where what your percent of transmission is if you're wearing a mask and someone else isn't. So, um, and Dr. Helmrich did give my daughter her first COVID test, which was negative. So, um, he, you know, is very cautious, uh, even, even though there was very little chance of exposure. He, uh, didn't think it'd be good to send, uh, for either of us to send my daughter to school. So, you know, I complied and the test was negative. But the next thing is, is this for sports, um, beginning February 1st?
It's, it's actually for sports that began with the hockey season.
Right.
On January 2nd, hockey began with outdoor practices with masks. We didn't have any contact drills. We did conditioning, and now we are practicing as of January 12th. I believe that was the first day practice was allowed, so we are practicing, we're practicing at the Ca- Mercer County Outdoor Rink. And that's where the games would be, uh, be held. So, so, you know, hockey, now, indoor would be basketball and fencing, which will start in the next couple of weeks. So, uh, that's why I wanted, remember, I'm not going to have another board meeting until the end of January. So I want an authorization so that I could give Brian authority to have the kids compete in a safe manner, and maybe not with our traditional partners, maybe with some other partners that, uh, are not traditional to Princeton.
And can I ask what the thinking is about swimming?
Uh, swimming is, uh, you know, is, we're, they're going to go, you know, proceed with swimming. Uh, so there shouldn't be any issue with that. It should be the same as basketball and/or indoor fencing and the other indoor sports. Uh, Brian is, uh, holding parent meetings. There'll be another parent meeting this Friday night for schools that are beginning over the next two weeks. Uh, he's very, very meticulous with regard to, uh, making sure that our coaches follow all protocols. Uh, we usually have an EMT, a trainer, to make sure that the, all, all of our protocols are put in place. And as I say, we've been fairly successful, touch wood, that, uh, we have not had any significant transmissions.
Jean?
Thanks, Dr. G. I just wondered how many schools in our conference are not adopting the universal mask wearing protocol? And if they tell you why, why not?
Pretty much, uh, so far, there is no, there isn't any other school district in Mercer County, to my knowledge, that has adopted the universal mask wear. And they just indicate that, uh, I, there, there really hasn't been any reason given other than the fact that they don't, they're not, the, the, their approval, their board approval did not require the universal mask per, per caution. There were no specific reasons given to me about why, other than the fact that their boards have approved, uh, participation in sports without mask wearing.
And Barry, the NJ SIAA and the governor are silent on this?
Uh, I'm trying to remember the exact verbiage of the NJ SIAA. Uh, you know, they're, they're, they're talking about, you know, taking precautions and wearing masks, but they're not talking about mandating mask, uh, wearing, uh, for participation in the sport. So mask wearing prior to, mask wearing on the bench, uh, but not actually in the, uh, you know, the actual physical contact with the sport.
Okay. Do you want to speak briefly to the vaccination piece?
Yes, I will. Uh, the other authorization that I'd like to work with, we, I spoke to the board, um, during the Christmas holidays. Princeton Health Department, excuse me, Princeton Health Department is going to have its first clinic on January 11th, next Monday. Uh, it is our PD day, and, uh, what I would like to do is have all of our nurses who are willing to go and be trained by the Princeton Health Department, so that they would be familiar with the protocols, uh, for providing vaccinations. We will ask our nurses to participate based on the following. A review of the language of, uh, of the Shared Service Agreement by the Princeton Health Department that would indemnify our nurses and provide them insurance, uh, while they're working for the Princeton Health Department and administering or helping administer vaccinations. That shared service agreement is not complete yet, and we have not been assured of indemnification of our nurses. I did have Matt check with the New Jersey School Boards Group, and, uh, Matt, you please chime in here. But if I remember our conversation correctly, we are not, they are not covered under our school board's policy. So therefore, in order for them to participate, they would have to be covered under the county and/or the state insurance policy for providing vaccinations. And we want to be sure, our nurses have been phenomenal in volunteering their time to help the Princeton Health Department with contact tracing since last March. So we want to be sure, uh, to protect, uh, our personnel and make sure that they are, number one, trained, and number two, that they're indemnified and that we have our solicitor review the language to be sure of that, and to make sure that they would be covered if they participated with the Princeton Health Department, which we really want them to do, because we believe that our nurses will be able to, uh, uh, assist in the, and, in vaccinating uh, in, in a quicker manner than if left to the Princeton Health Department alone. So what I'm asking permission for is that we would allow our nurses to do the work with the Princeton Health Department after hours and after our students leave, uh, school on a normal school day. They are indemnified and covered by their insurance so that we don't put our nurses in any jeopardy.
Okay, thank you. If there's no questions, what I'm going to propose on this, for the rest of the meeting, is that we go quickly through all the consent items, the remaining consent items. We have the public comment, and then we vote. Is that okay with everyone?
Beth, did you want me to touch on the base, on the, on the, uh, increase in the custodial hourly rate?
You can do that right now, sure, why not?
Okay, just quickly, uh, as you all know, the, uh, minimum rate, wage, wage went up to $12 an hour beginning in January. So our, we had an $11 rate, so we needed to move it to 12. We are having difficulty finding substitute custodians to help us assist in keeping our schools clean. So we, and administratively, we're making a recommendation to move to $15 an hour. We're working with some community outreach people who believe that they may be able to help us, have some community people, uh, work with us on a part-time basis at $15 an hour to help support, uh, keeping our schools clean during this pandemic. If we're able to do that and secure people at $15 an hour, it will be significantly less than us going out and contracting private vendors to assist our custodial staffs, especially during the short weeks when we do a deep cleaning at night because of, uh, being in school for four consecutive days. So we think it's in the best interest, short term and long term, uh, for the Princeton community to have substitutes who live locally who would be able to assist us, uh, not only during the pandemic, but for illness and vacations and everything else.
Thank you. If there are any, no questions, then I'm, I'm going to go back and start reading through the consent items. And if you have a question, you know, just, yep.
I just, um, Matt, I need, um, item, what, what is that? Uh, D13 separated. And I apologize for not letting you know sooner.
Okay, so let's go, just stop me if anything else. D1 is the annual meeting schedule. D2, policy manual and bylaws. D3, student code of conduct.
Yeah, I have a question on that one. What, I'm sorry, because I, I'm not sure if this was approved back in October. But at the end of this, what is the, um, I'm sorry, at the very end, it's called statement of value by the students on this? I just didn't understand where this came from, the vision, the statement of value.
It is, it's the same code of conduct, Debbie, that you guys have been approving for the last few years. It, it, there are no changes to, to that, uh, to that code of conduct.
Nothing? Because I thought I read, like, it was more about buses, if things happen on buses, if things happen with cell phones.
To my knowledge, since I've been here, we have not changed that code of conduct. So I'm not, I'm, I, I can't speak to previous, but I was, I, I, I'm pretty sure that it has been adopted the previous year also.
So I, I guess for our policy group going forward in 2021.
That is one of the things, that is be one of the things that'll be taken, uh, that the board would need to review.
Okay.
Because there are a lot of things that are occurring now with, uh, uh, online instruction that weren't considered back when that was written. So there are a whole host of things that a code of conduct actually does need a review.
Okay, great.
Peter? You're muted.
Yours a quarter.
Sorry. No, that was, that was not my fault. I was, uh, clicking on the wrong, uh, box, because I was trying to read the, the, uh, policy at the same time, so I apologize. I will still give the quarter, though. This is something we actually addressed, and that statement is not part of the policy. Um, it's there at the bottom after the policy, something that the students wanted to affirm, but it's not actually part of our board policy, because it's about what the students are stating, and there was a, a whole history to that that we did discuss in the policy committee, um, I don't know, maybe three months ago or so, Matt, if you recall, and I don't remember the exact date, but.
Back in September, uh, yeah.
So it's confusing to have it.
Yes. In fact, I think, I think that that, um, if, if we go to the policy that we approved, that is not in, that statement there, even though it's on here, that was not actually in the policy that we approved back in September, October, whenever the second reading was. I'm pretty.
Do we, maybe, Debbie, you want to make a motion that we, for purposes of our approval, annual approval, we take, we make sure that that last bit is not included, because it's, it isn't in our manual? If you'd like to make that motion, and someone can second it, and then we can.
Sure, um, I'd like to make a motion that on policy 5131, our vision, a statement of values, is not included in our vote.
Thank you. Is there a second to that? Yeah, Daphna, thank you. So Matt, is that okay? We can just, oh, well, are we? We have to have a, a vote on the amendment to that piece. So can we, can we do that one by a show of hands? Are we? Can we have a show of hands of those in favor of amending the student code of conduct to reflect what was actually approved in, in on October 27th, which did not include that last bit by the students? Do we have a show of hands on that? So I'm seeing, um, all, Michelle's is against. Is not voting for that.
And, and Jean is not voting for that.
Jean is not voting for that.
It's the nicest thing in the whole policy, and it comes from our students. That's why I'm voting no.
I'm voting no for the same reason, it's the student's voice, and, and that we have so few times that we can actually acknowledge and accept um, what our students recommend. I'm not inclined to take it out if it doesn't have any kind of substantive impact or negative impact.
But, uh, but I'm, what the confusion for me is that it's actually not part of the policy. So if we want to put it into the policy, we should revise the policy to include it. But what I heard Peter say is it's actually attached, but it's not the policy. So I would be in favor of including it. You know, functionally as part of the policy, I just am confused as to why it's separate, so. So maybe we, and, and I think we should go forward and, in the policy committee, relook at this and understand for everybody why it's here and where, where it came from.
You did do that. I think there may be some, I'm sorry, I, I think there may be some confusion. I think the idea here was not to, and, I mean, we've done it, it's here, but was not to re-approve or kind of rehash the, the code of conduct policy, but rather the student code of conduct that the students actually sign each year. Um, that was my understanding when we discussed it, and that's why it's here. I don't believe that if you look in past years, that this policy is on the reorg, uh, approval list of kind of the standard, uh, items. Um, I think it was to, to just approve the student code of conduct, um, their policy manual, whatever the official title is, not our board policy.
You're correct, Peter, because basically administrators are administering a discipline and/or, uh, acting, and this is, this is their, this is their, uh, it becomes their code for, for, for what occurs and what, and what should be, uh, referred to with restorative justice, et cetera, et cetera. So you're right, it's not necessarily the policy, it's the code of conduct that the administrators are utilizing, and students are adhering to.
So if we look at the resolution that we're talking about, it says resolved that we have reviewed and we re-adopt the, the Board of Ed's student of, student of con- student of conduct for the ensuing board year. What, what, what would you like us to do here? What, what do we need to do on this as a consent item? What, what, what would you like us to do here? What, what do we need to do on this as a consent item? So you?
I would just approve the code of conduct period. And as far as the concern that Michelle raised along with Jean, that can be considered, you know.
In the policy committee.
In the policy committee and add it to the policy if you believe that's appropriate.
Okay. Someone make a note of that on the policy committee side. Okay, so are we back to just, are we okay to just include this in the consent now? Do we need to do anything different? Okay.
We're taking it, I'm just confused. So are we, we're taking out the part with the students because that wasn't adopted?
It was on, on the 27th. I just looked it up.
It was? Okay.
Values that we put at the end because we wanted to kind of keep that there as a student statement of values, but not be part of the policy if, if I'm remembering the.
I think that's correct.
September.
I think that the, the confusion here is that in the, in the agenda, under D3, it's a student code of conduct. I think that is correct. That's what we wanted to kind of approve or confirm. But then the attachment has the policy itself and not the the student code of conduct itself, which is what it, I think really what we're affirming at this point.
Which, which is in the policy that we're reading. So the language is there, but there's more than we would ordinarily have approved. So are we comfortable approving the student code of conduct as a, which is reflected in the document attached, but is not the whole thing? Is that clear?
Yeah. What's the recommendation, Matt?
Yes, what? So it sounds like that I should not have included 5131 in this annual item. What I'm gathering now from hearing all you discussing this.
Maybe it should have just been the excerpt of the code of conduct from the.
Given the code of conduct period.
From the book that the students see. But it is the same language that's in the policy. So it's clear that we can still accomplish that approval, but we just are talking about a different format. Are we okay? Okay. Is it clear? All right. I'm going to move on. The newspapers for legal advertisements, legal advertisements for hiring a staff, the depositaries, depositaries for student activity funds, petty cash, authorization for transfers, authorization to pay bills, solicitation of bids, authorization to procure goods and services, professional services, bid and quote threshold, district organization, hiring in between board meetings. And then I'm going to go to the adoption of minutes for December 15th.
Can I ask a quick question? Actually, since Brett is here, I had a question about the, the newspaper. Where is that? The legal advertisement? Is there any change to this, given that so much is done on the web? And I know we have a certain number of hours that we have to notice any meeting and it has to be done in print in these newspapers. I just wonder if you've heard anything about if, if things are published on the board's websites. And again, this is not just us, this is the entire state, but this seems sort of archaic that this is still what's done.
Yeah, no, it's completely archaic, but there still is a requirement to publish it in there because we're supposed, I mean, after 48 hours in advance. So, you know, in special, absolute special circumstances when you have to, you know, I mean, you know, we do, you know, do recommend other steps, but no, you should still have a newspaper record and should still unfortunately spend the money to the publisher.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're on F1 adoption of minutes for December 15th. And then I'm skipping Barry's items because he's.
Because, well, Jean has to abstain because she wasn't even part of the board. So if you.
Oh, and I actually skipped too fast over Daphna's one too. Can we go back to the action item on?
We can.
D13 first to do that action and then we'll do the action on the minutes, just to make sure we don't miss anything? Okay, so on D13, could I have a motion for approval of the professional services resolution? Brian, a second. Jean, do we have any discussion? If no discussion, could we have a call of the roll, please, for D13?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfield?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Baglia?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
John Tuck Ponder?
You're muted, Michelle.
Sorry, yes.
Peter Katz?
We're going to be rich.
Said, yes, Peter? Thank you. We can't hear you.
Yes, 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 yes.
Anthony Kendall?
Abstain.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Dean Durbin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion pass nine, nine, one abstention. Okay, then we're going back to F1, adoption of minutes. And can I have a motion for this one? Because it's another action item. Michelle, second. Brian, any discussion? If not, can we call the roll, please, for F1 adoption of December 15th minutes?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfield?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Baglia?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes. Abstain.
Okay, motion, motion pass nine with one abstention. That takes us down to the last item. That's a consent that we haven't talked about is I1 M O E S C transportation agreement. And then before we vote on the consent items, I think we wanted to do the, the public comment. Is that correct?
Yes. Are there any comments out there from public members? As we talked about, just raise your hand at the bottom of the screen. I am seeing one. Maria Wega?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year to everybody. I wanted to express my gratitude to Mr. Galasso, Dr. Galasso for his recommendation in terms of increasing the substitute custodian salaries. And briefly urge that the salaries of similarly low-paid employees, support employees be reconsidered and reviewed specifically as it pertains to teenage, which I think would now become the lowest paid employees in the district and their contributions and crucial role, I think, has become increasingly evident in, in the, this past month. So thank you again for recommending this. And if we could take it a little bit further, it would be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Beth, I am not seeing any other comments.
If there's no other comments, then I think we have to call for a vote on all of the consent items that we've been through. I would ask for a motion, please. Thank you, Peter. Second, Jean. So we can have a vote on the consent agenda, please.
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfield?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Betsy Baglia?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Peter Katz?
Yes.
Anthony Kendall?
Yes.
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Dean Durbin?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes.
Thank you. And we have a couple more things. I noticed that our student representatives are here tonight, even though it is our organizational meeting. Welcome to 2021 Board. Did you guys have a report or anything you wanted to give us tonight?
No.
We didn't expect that.
Yeah, we'll be giving our report on January 23rd, I believe, right? That's when we're meeting next.
The 26th, yes.
The 26th, yes.
We look forward to hearing from you. We just wanted to make sure that you weren't waiting to give us some information.
You know, Josh does have an announcement to make though, right?
I do.
Yeah, don't you want to tell everybody that you're now a Yale man?
Yes, I am.
He was early decision to Yale, so congratulations to you.
Thank you all. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And the other thing we wanted to talk about, I think, before we go into our closed session, was just the next Bucks County IU. Whether we were going, you know, we've done work with them. Now we've had two sessions. I think Barry has, has said that if, if we did another session with them, it would be another, I think, was it 2,500, Barry?
It's 2,500, yes.
For another three hours. I know we were kind of in the middle of our conversation last time and we kind of ended. And I think we had some more to do with them. And we also obviously want to work on our, our committee structures. Not that we have to have the Bucks IU there for us to talk about who's on committees, but maybe to have them help us work through, you know, what we want our committees to do, or how we use our committees and what their charges are. So I opened that up for discussion. And we, do we, do we generally think that we would like to have another Bucks IU session?
I, I would be in favor of having one more Bucks IU session. I don't like leaving. We had some, we had some good discussion, not easy, but, but important. And I think that their facilitation helped us get to a different place. And I'd like to see us take it through to the end. So I would be in favor of that.
Okay.
Yeah, I would too. And also, we didn't share what we did in our last kind of group.
Right, right.
So I would want to share that. I don't feel, and it would, yeah. And, and I can't remember if we said we would talk about committees a little. But I, I would go for another session.
Okay, Brian?
I, I guess my, my question is, are we doing it session by session? Or my thought was they might have more than one session worth of work to help us with, we just going to go à la carte or commit to their recommendation, whatever that is?
Good question. Well, I know that, you know, I think we would like to at least to have another session, hopefully get to committees. It seems like we maybe should see what we get through in another three hours with them. Does that make sense? And we need to find a date when everyone can do it in the midst of our superintendent search and everything else. I'm not sure. Betsy, you probably have the best handle on when, when people are available.
Yes, I think we had two weeknights that we are now taking for the superintendent search. We need another one. We have not looked into weekends, so I don't know. That was something we, our work with them started on the weekend.
So maybe, Barry, maybe you could help us with that, talking to them. Yeah, and let us know when we can do another session, but we're agreement that I think we, we could use it.
Okay.
Okay. And obviously, we want to do that so we can get our, you know, change, if we want to change our committees, that would be helpful too. But in the meantime, we're going to go with the committees we have. So.
Okay.
I think we're still functional. Is there anything else before we go into closed to talk about super search? If not, can I have a, a motion to adjourn, adjourn to closed session? Betsy, second. Second, Daphna, thank you. All in favor? Okay, thank you very much, everyone, for attending our organizational session. We look forward to, to sharing our work with the public for the rest of this year. We've got lots on the agenda as ever. We're a busy board, a busy district. Thank you to our administrators. We're going to go into closed without just the board. I think Betsy has sent us all a link to a Zoom, a separate Zoom. So we will terminate this Zoom, then go to that for our closed.